Good evening. I like to call to order tonight's meeting of Belbrick City Council. Today's date is September the 27th, 2021. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, could you call the roll?
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Havens?
Here.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mayor Schaller?
Here. Before you, we have the minutes of our last meeting of council on September the 13th. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to those minutes?
None.
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
None.
Very none. The minutes are approved as submitted. Under Mayor's announcements, I've got a couple of proclamations and a couple of Ose of Office tonight. But before I get started, I want to recognize that tonight is last minute, the last meeting for our Clerk of Council, Pam Timmons. Pam was sworn in November of 2018 as Clerk of Council. We've enjoyed working with her. She's very organized and always willing to help out when she was needed. During her tenure, the role of clerk changed tremendously. One of her strengths was keeping council informed, and I especially liked the clerk update, which is now part of our ongoing agenda. The search for a replacement will begin this week. Pam, thanks again for your service. We're fortunate to have you as part of council. If anyone on council cares to speak, I would encourage you to do so now or at the end of the meeting.
I'm just, I'm going to miss her tremendously. We'll still see each other, but I'm going to miss her. She's been an awesome clerk.
I think, Pam, I think you've done an outstanding job. You've kept us straight. You've researched and found a lot of things that maybe weren't doing exactly right and got us on the, on the right straightway. So, I appreciate that.
And I just wanted to add, certainly it's been a challenging time with COVID. And I'm sure in your employment agreement, it had the line, "Other duties as required", which was exhaustively employed. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, the first proclamation is Fire Prevention Week proclamation. Whereas the city of Belbrick is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those looking and visiting our city, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, in homes and locations where people are greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association. At fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you of the danger in the event of fire, in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas Belbrick residents should be everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Belbrick residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Belbrick residents who will make sure their smoke detectors and CO2 alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Belbrick first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Belbrick residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps, personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2021 Fire Protection Week theme, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety", effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. I therefore, Michael W. Schweller, Mayor of the city of Belbrick, do hereby proclaim October 3rd to the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all people of Belbrick to learn the sounds of fire safety during Fire Prevention Week of 2021 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Belbrick's Fire and Emergency Services. As a witness, I will sign this and also affix the city seal. And those are chief of service tonight. Did you care to comment or anything?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk a little bit about fire safety real quick. As you mentioned, the theme this year is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety". We started today actually getting into Steven Bell, or had actually the Steven Bell kids walk to our fire station to start talking about fire safety. Due to the COVID last year, we were unable to do that, and we were pretty bummed about it. So this year, just the first day, today, we had a blast. The teachers thanked us tremendously, and we look forward to carrying out this the rest of the week. Next Tuesday, to finish up Fire Prevention Week for the city, we will have our annual open house. It will be held at our Station Number Two on West Franklin Street from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be several demos going on. We'll have one of the areas, helicopters will be coming in. One of the hospitals helicopters will be landing and doing some demonstrations there. We'll be cutting up a car and, and the other thing we'll be doing with the kids in school, we have a coloring contest. And every year, we pick a winner, and the last couple of years, we have taken the winner to school in the fire engine for each grade. This year, we upped the ante a little bit, and the winner is going to have breakfast made by the firefighter, made by the firefighters that morning, and then we'll take the ride into school on the fire engine. So, we really look forward to this. This is one of our favorite times of the year. So I appreciate the city stepping up and taking care of this for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Glad to do so. Again, Fire Prevention Week, October 3rd through 9th, 2021. Yet one other proclamation tonight, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence in America is intolerable, unacceptable, must be stopped, and deserves considerable public attention. Whereas children who witness domestic violence often grow up believing that physical cruelty in relationships is acceptable behavior, and thus they tend to perpetuate a cycle of violence in society. Whereas many federal, state, and local programs addressing the domestic violence problem have achieved success, bringing greater safety to families. And whereas community leaders, police, judges, advocates, healthcare workers, and concerned Americans are working together across America to develop solutions to this problem and to implement services that approve our responses when it occurs. And whereas programs designed to educate men and women about ways they can help prevent domestic violence are being developed across our nation. And whereas numerous law enforcement officials and departments have created specialized domestic violence units that cooperate with community advocates to enhance services for victims and representatives in the faith community frequently provide essential support in areas where there may be no other services available. Whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion. And whereas, we must continue to hold domestic abusers accountable, punish them to the full extent of law, and prevent them from inflicting more abuse. Therefore, I, Michael W. Schweller, Mayor of the city of Belbrick, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and ask our citizens to recognize this important event. I believe there's also a candlelight vigil on October the 4th.
Yes.
At 7:00 p.m., and I think that Elaine Middlestetter will be representing council.
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. And it's open to public?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
It's at the green, out on the big central, green out there.
Okay, the center.
They call it the green.
Where they put the trees?
Where they put the trees.
Okay. Believe it or not, only two proclamations for tonight. Next, we have two Ose of Office. First off, Lakeisha Taylor. If you could join me at the podium. Welcome, Lakeisha. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lakeisha Taylor.
I, Lakeisha Taylor.
Salom swear.
Salom swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And I will obey, obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
With all respect.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the charter.
The provisions of the charter.
And the ordinance of Belbrick.
And the ordinance of Belbrick.
It will faithfully discharge.
Say it again.
Will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
And the duties of all.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon what I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Village Review Board. You can sign this proclamation for your oath.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Lakeisha. Thanks for serving. Next up, Kyle Beamer.
This is for the Portisoni Fields and Park Review Committee.
Could you raise your right hand, Kyle?
I, Kyle Beamer.
I, Kyle Beamer.
Salom swear.
Salom swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the constitutions of the state of Ohio.
And the constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will obey the laws.
Will obey the laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the charter.
The provisions of the charter.
And the ordinances of Belbrick.
The ordinance of Belbrick.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Standing here on the dotted line. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Elaine, does that mean our boards are at full capacity now?
Yes. The only one I'm not sure about is the Director of Commission. Are we still?
I need to talk to the area again.
Okay. But the boards are full.
Very good. Next up on the agenda, we do have a public hearing, Ordinance 2021-8. Dr. Dave.
All right, sir. Reading of the city of Belbrick, Ordinance Number 2021-8, and ordinance amending Ordinance 2021-4 by making supplemental appropriations to adjust the city of Belbrick appropriations for 2021. Whereas the city of Belbrick adopted the 2021 annual budget based on the best information available at the time. And whereas additional costs and/or adjustments will occur in various 2021 personnel services and other expenses, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrick hereby ordains, in Section 1, that the 2021 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. I would just mention here is a total of $553,000, and I assume the city manager is going to give us a brief overview again. Thank you, sir. Section 2, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that any and all deliberations of this council that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including, but not limited to, Section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. That's the reading of the ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Dave. Rob, if you want to comment on it, I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but it's worthwhile to.
I sure can.
Bring it up again as a public hearing, and we can have citizen input on this as well.
Absolutely. I'll just kind of run through, as noted in the packet, the agenda item information report. Just kind of run through that briefly. First off, the, the overall cost, as Councilman had noted, the 553 of that, 429 or almost 430,000 of it is covered in additional revenue. So the actual impact to the budget is about 120-plus thousand dollars. The, the purpose of it in the general fund, general fund is our only non-restrictive fund, and there was a need for various adjustments. The administrative department within the fund was using, was used to schedule and to appropriate the funds for the downtown streetscape study that is underway. And a little pre-plug Wednesday, our community forum meeting, but we'll get to that. There's $35,000 for the Kleinger's group for that study. 75% of it is covered through grant revenue. $10,000 for additional legal fees for 2021. $3,781 for additional prosecution fees, which was an increase in the contract. That's a fixed cost. And we had some additional IT projects. I'll note, even though it's covered in the capital, as council recalls early in the year, many of the capital and other projects were not budgeted originally, waiting until later in the year to determine how revenues and, and the situation with, you know, returns operations and stuff went. So many of this is, is simply identifying those actual costs, appropriating the funds to carry out some of those projects. The museum department is likely to receive a grant, and in addition to that, there's some exterior, exterior facility repairs that we've identified that need to be done, and that were, that were held off, and now we think that those need to be appropriated. The police fund had a $13,539 worth of donations. In addition, there is $11,500 for additional IT-related expenses. Some of those will be upcoming in terms of some enhancements to the records management and internal computer systems. The street fund, engineering costs for the 725 Bridge project, which I'll give a brief update here in a little bit. The expenses for the contracted engineering firm and, as well as the need for hiring of a right-of-way acquisition consultant, that again, I'll discuss in detail here soon. Those funds will need to be appropriated. Most of these funds, once the project is underway and we are in receipt of the state funding that we were granted for OPWC as well as the regional grant, will be appropriated later on and cover the cost of that revenue. It's just not counted as part of this at this time. Then I mentioned earlier the capital improvement fund. 18,000, I'm sorry, 16,000 and some for purchase installation, updating to get our cable TV programming back in order and working order, hopefully. And as, as noted, that was a project that was taken on and, and approved by council. So now that we've got the final costs, we're ready to have all that installed, and we need to appropriate the funds for that as well. And the additional 40,000 is for the actual cost of budgeted items for capital. There were estimates. Now we've got some actual costs for some of those, and that will be covered as well. The coronavirus relief fund had $1,888 left in it that was not appropriated, but we'd like to appropriate that, use that and close out that fund account. Then we have the local fiscal recovery fund, which is the other name for the American Rescue Plan Act money or ARPA money. Our initial allotment has been received. We have chosen to divide that up at this time for about 25% for personnel services and the other for other expense. We will then assign that project by project as we identify the priority list of things and get input and solicit from the, from the community as well as council members and other key, key community figures. The last part of it is a general breakdown of what the current budget is. It is still a legally balanced budget with this appropriation based on the original estimate. And additions to revenue at this point in time, it creates a difference of $110,000. So the, the budget is, is there. There is money available for this supplemental appropriation, and we certainly recommend consideration for adoption so that we can continue on finalizing the listed projects as they are our priority, and they are identified as priorities through the original discussion of the budget and input from the community and council alike.
Thanks, Rob. Any comment or discussion of council regarding Ordinance 2021-8? I think we talked about a lot of it at our last meeting. Given this is a public hearing, does anyone through the audience care to speak out regarding Ordinance 2021-8? See none, I declare this public hearing closed. We have a motion regarding Ordinance 2021-8.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Dr. Van Veldheisen to adopt Ordinance 2021-8 and ordinance amending Ordinance 2021-4 by making supplemental appropriations to adjust the city of Belbrick appropriations for 2021. This was seconded by Mr. Havens. Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes, thank you. We have no introduction of ordinances. We have no resolutions, but I would suggest possibly tonight, we make a resolution to appoint Rob as her interim Clerk of Council, to that position is filled. I think this will ensure that we have a very clean, smooth transition between parties. Her last day is going to be October the 6th, or whatever we determine makes the most sense for us. She's an hourly, part-time employee. We'll find what the best combination is to get work closed out currently, but I would like to, it's not our agenda to have Rob appointed as the interim Clerk of Council such that she can relay anything to him and he can make sure that the ball keeps in play and we move on for the next person. Mr. Schaller, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Havens to name Mr. Schaller as the interim Clerk of Council, and this was seconded by Mr. Hope. Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. We have no old business.
We'll make it as interim as possible.
Good plan. Does anyone have any new business? It takes us to the city manager report.
Thank you. I'll start off again referring to, was included in the packet. Goes for the supplemental. Oh, there it is. Yeah, my, there it is. There in my last page. I'm thinking. Sorry about that. I just didn't turn one last page. Just to follow along. I mentioned the, the community forum that we have this Wednesday at 15 West Franklin at the Art Gallery. This is a meeting that is facilitated by the Kleinger's group. They are the firm that was contracted by the city to conduct the downtown streetscape study. And the focus is on Franklin and Main Streets. And again, this is for streetscape, not necessarily downtown land use planning or revitalization of actual buildings and structures. This is streetscape. Walkability, crosswalk, safety, intersection use, curbing, traffic calming, all those things that are identified. The community forum is very important because we encourage anybody and everybody that has an opportunity to stop by between 6:00 and 8:00 to run through, there'll be a series of static displays that are called the vision boards, where you would be able to see a concept, see a targeted feature. Maybe it's a crosswalk, a design of, of curbing, could be landscaping, whatever the elements of the, of the plan are. And just provide some initial input to see what is important, what is appealing. What are some of the, the priorities or the needs within that particular area of the vision board? And they will gather and collect that information, and they will include that to identify the structure of priorities within the final draft of the report. So again, we, we ask anybody and everybody that's available to stop by between 6:00 and 8:00 and provide your feedback and help us begin to reshape and restructure the streetscape of downtown, which will lead to bigger and better things in the future for certain. The next brief update that I have is on the State Route 725 Bridge. As you recall, there's a bridge widening to allow for a path, a multi-use path to interconnect for the rest of 725 and bring that into, to the downtown area. We were successful. I attended last week the executive committee meeting. We ranked number three out of, I think, some 28 submissions for OPWC for our assistance, for assistance and additional funding for our match. So that will greatly reduce the amount of match that the city has towards that project. And that will be, that's, that's a good thing. So the, the project showed some priority, and hopefully as we continue with our projects up through Little Sugar Creek Road, the same level of priority will be given as, as we continue forward. Our next step in that process will be the selection of a right-of-way acquisition consultant. That is a requirement as, from ODOT, as they will be the project manager for this particular project, which again, offsets and reduces the cost to the city, not only in time and resources, but it is covered within the cost of that as well. So a couple of good wins for the community on some infrastructure enhancements and improvements for downtown. It will, as soon as we can get the project or the right-of-way acquisition taken care of, then they, they buy the project and they get it on for the, the budget that is current. And as far as a project timeline, that's not quite developed yet. As far as construction, they have to start buying and awarding the contracts and bids. So that will come shortly thereafter. An additional thing, the last thing, actually not the last thing, I have one more thing after, that I, that I want to add. But I want to talk briefly about issue five. Council earlier in the year had passed an ordinance to direct the Board of Elections to place on the ballot a, a request for renewal of tax for the benefit of the city of Belbrick. And we are beginning a information campaign to make sure that our citizens are armed with the information they need to make, an informed decision for the benefit of the community and what type of services they choose to have within the city of Belbrick. We have a, a choice to maintain some essential services that we've identified. And this is a renewal of 1.3 mils. That generates about $225,000 annually for the city. And how that money is used is divided up in four primary areas. There is a subsidy to the fire department, subsidy to the police department, and it also contributes to our interior street paving program, and also for storm drain and ditch maintenance. That's an area that we are going to be strongly focused on and enhancing and making use of these funds. In fact, we're hoping to reallocate and, and capture and, and maximize as much of these funds as possible to, to really begin to evaluate our storm water and surface water runoff system within the community. So those are priorities that are in existence, that have been used the previous times that the community has done a renewal on this 1.3 mils. And I think the community has done a pretty good job of demonstrating that when it promises to make use of the funds that the taxpayers provide, that it makes good on those promises. There have already been enhancements to the interior street program. There have been enhancements to public safety, and there have been enhancements to the, to the drainage. There's more to come. There's more to do, but there has been work and effort. So I think that promises made, promises kept type of mentality certainly is, is applicable in this situation. And again, with it being a five-year renewal, the community can always hold the city to task and make sure that it maintains that mentality of making good use and keeping good on the identified priorities of the community and, and addressing those through the funds that the community provides us. A little bit more detail, the tax, effective tax rate on it this time around is about 13% less than it was in 2017. So the current taxes per $100,000 is about $31.65 per year. In 2017, that was $36.50 per year. So again, effective use of that money, the reduction factor is being applied in the effective tax rate has been adjusted, as in with any. The other key point of this is that since this was a pre-2013 outside millage of the 1.3, it, it effectively allows for a 12.5% rollback or credit for the property taxes paid. So 10% of that is the, the, the natural rollback, and 2.5% is the non-business property current owner occupant credit, or some people refer to as homestead. So what that is, is when the state developed an income tax, it promised that in return, it would pay for the portion of some of the property taxes for residents. While this levy still falls within that requirement, and if we were to lose that levy, that 12.5% savings to each taxpayer would effectively go away. So, and the city would not gain any more money. It would just cost the taxpayers potentially 12.5% more on this millage. So that's another very important thing, that the timeliness of this. The residents are getting a very good value for the dollars that they are investing, not only through the actions of the city, but taking advantage of the 12.5% rollback credit that's, that's offered and provided. The ballot language is, is right on the sheet. We're going to make sure to familiarize the community with the ballot language, knowing that what it says, what it means. And we will be finalizing probably by tomorrow, our informational webpage that will be attached to, that will be part of our website. They'll provide information on a, on a basic, a little bit more detailed, and then a little bit more thorough breakdown of how we build our budget and how the dollars associated to this renewal request will affect our 2022 budget. So that's kind of a very brief overview, maybe not too brief, but brief enough.
You'd be bored to follow.
Yeah, but, but the goal is, is we want to make sure that, that no resident goes to the ballot, since we've asked them to go. That no resident goes without the information. They need to make an informed decision. And whatever information that we can provide to anybody, we want to be committed to make sure to do that, to be open, honest, and transparent in all aspects. So that's all I had on that topic. The final.
Rob, let me just make a comment before we get too far away from it. The important thing is, is that it's kind of interesting, if we do the renewal, then we grandfather in the 12.5% rollback credit.
That is correct.
If we come for asking for new money, we lose the 12.5%. And that doesn't mean the city gets any more money. That means the state pays less.
Correct.
So we shift the burden from the state to basically our citizens.
That is correct. Each homeowner would pay that. Each homeowner would pay that. Yes.
And even though the millage is one point three mils, the effective millage is less than that.
One point oh three.
And so we're going to be paying, you know, roughly thirteen percent less than what we're paying right now with last time this was renewed back in twenty seventeen. And that's probably the third or fourth time it's been renewed, I think.
I think this will be the third.
Okay. Okay. Any questions to counsel on issue five while we're talking about for a minute? Okay. Good update on that, Rob. Thanks. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Nope. No problem. The last and final thing, kind of regarding issues and ballots, it is that season, the election season, signs are out, and I just want to make sure that regardless of the issue, the signs that our community is aware of of sign placement. Sometimes this becomes a a topic of, you know, control of where signs go, but it truly is about safety. The purpose of the code and the right-of-ways within our community are a little bit hard to identify sometimes because there's not sidewalks everywhere. It's real easy if there's a sidewalk to say, keep behind the sidewalk. But we really want to make sure that those those that have signs out placement for their various statements, issues, or or candidates, make sure that they that they pay attention, line of sight, right-of-way intersections, to make sure that people come and go can do can do so safely and make sure that they're not distracted in intersections, that they've got good lines of sight. The code states that it should be fifteen feet from the paved edge of a roadway. I know that there are certainly areas of the community that that is a literal impossibility. However, we do ask that everybody uses as much discretion and common sense in doing so, so that we can make sure that as people come and come to and fro and walk in and around, that they're not having to walk around or through a sign and and/or somebody pulling into an intersection has to pull up too far to see around. And, you know, so far, it looks like things are going well, but I think it's worthwhile just making sure to mention that that would be the that would be the request and the purpose of any any regulations. There's no permit required or anything, and we certainly encourage people to express their statements and freedoms, but we just ask that in that right-of-way areas that we keep those free and clear so that everybody's got the benefit of traveling safely. And that's all I had for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Rob. Does anyone else have any questions, and the city manager?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Thanks, Rob. Good report. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with service.
Thank you, Mayor. The Service Department had a pre-construction meeting for the work to be done on a water tower, the water tower up next to Ron Kyle Park. They're going to start this week. It's going to take five to seven days. They're going to repaint the inside and outside of the tower, and then their work will be inspected by Dixon Engineering. And they're going to have two coats of paint inside, three coats on the outside. The you'll just have the plain Bellbrook logo like it has now. The water tower will be down about two weeks. Our water demand has dropped, so with the tower being down that long, it won't be an issue. And then starting Monday, the Service Department will be flushing hydrants, and that sometimes can cause some rust in your water. So if you wash clothes, it might be, you just be careful that you might turn your whites a little reddish, but so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Forrest. Safety.
Yep. Just wanted to reiterate Chief Bizarro's comment or mention about the fire department visiting with kids pre-K through fifth grade, Monday through Friday, to discuss fire prevention, followed by the open house on October fifth, six to eight. And then police, I was informed that there was some firearms training with the newly purchased weapons and sighting systems. Great practice was had by all, and the officers continue to improve their proficiency. And I just double-checked, looked at the we had eight thousand dollars allocated in capital budget for weapons, so.
Very good.
That's it.
Thank you. Pointing to an audit.
Well, Mayor, I know you're going to find this hard to believe, that that nobody on council is more excited about work sessions and executive sessions than I am. So I am very, very glad to say we have three work sessions coming up to look at next year's budget in detail, as we've done in years past. I will miss Nick's advice this year. Also, I think we've been blessed this year with the additional dollars we've received through COVID and the ARPA funds, and so I expect the next the next three work sessions for the budget for the city to be good ones to look at and then come up with the budget to present to the city on November twenty-second and vote on December thirteenth.
Thank you, Dr. Dave. I look forward to meetings as well. They'll be fun. Always are. And we will probably have them in this room, I think. Therefore, anybody who's, you know, the new candidates and new applicants may want to come in to listen and pay attention. You can't give us feedback necessarily, but you can hear how the discussion goes, and I think that would be fair to have it more of an open. We normally meet in the back, and there's only a couple of people. We may go back there. It's a little bit easier, a little bit more convenient to talk than it is here, but we'll see whatsoever makes the most sense. Okay. Community affairs. Elaine.
Okay. The only thing I have is that Bellbrook was featured on WHIO news. They have a feature called Seven Seas, S-E-E-S, and they go around and interview small towns and and communities in our in their listening area. And Bellbrook was selected, and they did a three-minute episode for us. It is available on their website. Seven Seas, S-E-E-S.
It's on our website, too.
Is it on our website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On our website, too. Nicely done. I I was impressed with what they did.
It was well done. It was well done. And thanks for city manager for helping set it up and assist to get it that they put together. I know they plan them weeks in advance, and the dates are somewhat inflexible, but it worked out pretty good. I did see it. Thanks, Elaine. This brings us to open discussion of council. Forrest.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to kind of bring together Wednesday night's meeting, the that we're having at fifteen West Franklin for the public input. This weekend started out with a great music Friday night in McGee Park, sponsored by Ernie Havens in the Park District. Saturday, we had Art Fest at the Bellbrook Art Town Center, presented by John Line Sidle. Sunday, we had the Family First Foundation present the first annual car show sponsored by Cali and Associates. Bellbrook City Council's been working to improve Bellbrook so people will come and enjoy our small-town friendly. Events like we had this weekend is a positive example of where we want to go. April twelfth, twenty seventeen, a walkable community workshop was held to create ideas and find areas that need improvement to make the old village a more walkable and business-friendly environment. This workshop was in part a process that led to the updated comprehensive plan in twenty nineteen that had not been updated since nineteen seventy-four. That was the year I graduated, and now I'm on Medicare, so that's a while back. So a copy of the comprehensive plan is available on the city website. It's a nice document. The twenty seventeen workshop was made up of Bellbrook and Sugar Creek Township citizens plus business people from Bellbrook and its surrounding area. Public input was so important in that process. So on this Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, six to eight, there'll be an open house community forum to gather input and comments from residents and business regarding the future streetscape of downtown Bellbrook. Please mark your calendar and attend if possible because we need your input and comments and support moving forward to improve our wonderful old village. As in the beginning of this process, the key word is public input. As a council member, I want to hear how we can improve Bellbrook as a business, what kinds of things get in account and in your way that council can solve. As a citizen, what should Bellbrook look like? I've lived in the old village for thirty-eight years, and I have seen the ups and downs, and I feel the momentum moving forward. So please come out Wednesday night if you have the time and give us some comments. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Forrest. Ernie Havens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I really want to extend a a big thank you to Lakeisha and Kyle for stepping up and helping us with the city. Look forward to working with you guys, and we appreciate you guys doing that. Second, with my efforts with Green County Regional Planning, I just wanted to highlight that with the new development in the township Magnolia Meadows off of Clio, we are going to have an extension of one of our city streets. Kensington will be extended and go into the township from Bellbrook into the township through that development. And I particularly liked the way that the developers crafted that and that they gave the development a second entrance for fire, which is important, but they didn't make it a shortcut. So they actually kind of winded it through the development a little bit, purposefully around a pond, so. And hopefully, the the residents at Kensington appreciate that. I think it'll look good and not cause a problem for the city, and I was glad to see Green County and the developers put some thought into that, so. And lastly, Wednesday night, hope to see everybody watching and more. This is really an opportunity to come and participate in your community for the future. So Wednesday night, six to eight, please, please come out and join us.
Thank you, Ernie. Councilman Hope.
I want to second Ernie's sentiment. Lakeisha and Kyle, welcome. If there's any questions that you have with regards to historical events, and I mean like, you know, a hundred years ago, you know, within recent years, lessons learned, types of things like that, please feel free feel free to reach out, get in touch any way possible. Look forward to working with you. I also just wanted to highlight, I see that renovation is underway at one hundred East Franklin Street. The plans that I have anecdotally heard of sound very promising, very interesting, and I think it's one of those projects that's that could really complement our streetscape effort. And as Forrest mentioned, the momentum is on the positive, and I think that's another case in case of somebody committing to investing in our city. And also, as previously mentioned, look forward to seeing everybody out on Wednesday at the open house on the streetscape plan. This is years in the making, not only finding funding to do these efforts, but then studies and analysis and feedback. And now that we've got something tangible, we want to make sure that there's no stone left unturned, so I hope there's a a good turnout. Thanks.
Thank you, TJ. Councilwoman Mittelstetter.
Well, I also welcome Kyle and Lakeisha to our boards, looking forward to working with you. And I won't repeat, I have the same thing everybody else said, so I don't need to repeat again how important Wednesday night is for your input and your consideration, so thank you all.
Thanks, Elaine. Dr. Van Veldhuisen.
All right. Well, Lakeisha and Kyle, again, welcome. And I save my comments for Pam, so I'd have something to say now. So Pam, I think, for me, and I'm sure the others, simply put, thank you. I know this sort of the past few years, you have kept us trained. You have kept us legal with the the laws and regulations that we need to follow here in the state of Ohio. You have kept us focused, and I know many times if we appear efficient and effective up here, it's because of your efforts behind the scenes. You're a big part of that. And yes, Rob, the pressure is on you. Again, for me, but I'm certain from all of us, just thank you. God bless. Godspeed.
Thank you, Dr. Dave. And I just wanted to again welcome Lakeisha and Kyle to the various boards and to city government. Thank you for volunteering, and let's have a big turnout on Wednesday night at fifteen West Franklin Street. At this point in time, we opened the meeting for public comment. We ask that you state your name and address. You're entitled to three minutes. Also, we ask you to avoid complaints or remarks directed against city staff or employees as they should be handled through the proper channels for filing complaints. At this point in time, should anyone want to come forward, please do so.
City manager.
Mayor. Council. My name's John Stafford. I'm a Sugar Creek resident. I wanted to compliment the city council on the selection of a new city manager. I'm aware that there was last-minute drama that was unfortunate and undeserved. A good city manager with the needed experience and vision will have a long impact into the future, but most importantly, a great city manager is not only critical for the City of Bellbrook and Sugar Creek Township, but the the region as a whole. What is good for the citizens of Bellbrook is also good for the citizens of Sugar Creek. Both communities, forever united and intertwined as one, are stronger, standing together than standing alone, with common goals and shared values, ever reaching for what is best for our citizens. With hopes and dreams of a better tomorrow, I believe our new city manager will help lead that way. Therefore, city council, you have my congratulations on a job well done. Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
On behalf of myself, my family, citizens of Sugar Creek, I welcome you to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Again, we're very happy to have Rob here. This was a great process. We were lucky to find the right guy at the right time in the right place, and it's been outstanding. Does anyone else in the audience care to come up and speak?
Hi there. Meredith Brenniger. Most of you know me. I'm at twenty-two twenty-one Ivy Crest Drive. Sometimes I'm stirring up a little bit of trouble. I've got all good comments tonight. I want to echo Keisha, welcome to the board. I know you know their context. I think the city is lucky to have you. Kyle, welcome. I'm actually the chair of the BZA PRC Committee, and we've been missing a member, so we'll be glad to have you, and we we try to, I think we have fun and and do a good job to the city, so I'll look forward to working with you. The third thing I wanted to mention was just, I'm glad to hear there's a desire to give community input on the ARPA funds. I think that's important, as well as maybe guidelines, you know, to educate them, sort of what what are acceptable uses for the money, similar to the educational campaign you mentioned for issue five. There are several complex issues on the ballot, including, I mean, the Green County jail is a is a whole other complicated issue. We won't get into that here. But finally, I just wanted to say a few words to Pam. I'm going to miss you. You know, you you are organized, you are detail-focused, you're you are a delight to work with personally, and you've made our job easy. You helped us through COVID, through Zoom meetings, through all the technical difficulties, right? You know? So thank you. I just wanted to officially publicly express my gratitude for your service.
Thank you, Meredith. And again, as we talk more about the ARPA funds, the rules and requirements with regards to what is a permissible expenditure are always changing. So we're watching that real close to find out. If you look at the CARES Act money that came out, what it was first allowed to be spent for and what it was ultimately permitted to be spent for were night and day apart. So hopefully, we'll see some things here whereby it becomes very flexible. Does anyone else in the audience care to address council this evening? Does any member of council have any other business to bring before us?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Want to thank Louis, our cameraman. At this point in time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn to executive session to consider the employment of a public employee. As far as viewing the audience goes, this will be the last business that'll be conducted tonight, so we thank you for watching and thank you for attending.
So moved, Mayor.
And for consideration pending or imminent litigation.
And also for consideration of pending imminent litigation.
So moved, Mayor.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Was that Dr. Dave? Were you the second?
Yes.
All right. Yeah.
Mr. Havens made a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee and also pending litigation. This was seconded. This was seconded by Dr. Van Bildhysen. Mr. Havens.
Yes.
Dr. Van Bildhysen.
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Miltstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you for attending.